Ready? Okay, would you please stand with my allegiance to the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Kirk, call oral.
Luhori.
Sir.
Saunders.
Here.
Rhodes.
Here.
Spinks.
Here.
Coche.
Niza.
Janutis.
Here.
Alright, we need a motion to excuse Mayor Stan Coche.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Can I have a second? Sandy. Wall.
Luhori. To excuse Mayor.
Uh, yes. I'm sorry.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutis.
Yes.
Okay, do we have, uh... One for Paula? Sandy, Wally, and them. There's nobody down at this house.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutis.
Yes.
Alright, uh... We'll go into old business first, or actually the minutes. Uh, we'll approve the... We need a motion to approve the work session minutes of September seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen. Heather. Paul.
Luhori.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutis.
Yes.
Alright, we need an approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on September seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen. Sandy.
Luhori.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutis.
Yes.
Alright, we don't have any presentations tonight. Alright, so we'll move on to old business. Ordinance number ninety-six thirty-six dash eighteen. An ordinance, a many ordinance number ninety-five forty-six dash seventeen concerning section nine thirteen point zero-two regarding sewer rates of the ordinances of the city and declaring an emergency. Alright, uh, this would be third reading, so can I have a motion for third reading? Are we gonna suspend? We can't, we don't have to do suspension. So we're gonna have to do the thirty day.
Okay, third reading.
So, third reading. So Heather, motion. Wally, second.
Uh, Luhori.
Do you want to do this question? Yeah, maybe you should explain the difference.
Uh, what we have passed in front of us are three ordinances, uh, one for the sewer rates, the seniors and disabled rates, and the water and the senior and disabled rates all in one. Uh, the city of Cleveland is going to increase our water rates five point oh nine seven five percent next year, and in doing so, um, the city's water fund was in good shape. Uh, my recommendation is to move five percent of that over to the, instead of make a nine percent rate in sewer, and water department raised it up point nine seven five percent, so not even one percent. The effect of that, I think we were talking about that earlier, was just less than five dollars per month of an increase in sewer, as well as less than one dollar per average monthly bill that we see in the city. Uh, but with those rates, they're necessary with capital improvements that we need to tie that into the sewer plant that has to be done. We have a lot of issues that have to be taken care of, and with that capital expenditures comes the requirement to fund that, so this will tie in directly to that. I ask council to pass that decision.
Any other courses? Kirk, call oral.
Luhori.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutis.
Yes.
Okay, next one. Ordinance number ninety-six thirty-seven dash eighteen, amending ordinance number ninety-five forty-seven dash seventeen concerning section nine thirteen zero-three regarding rate reduction for senior citizens and the permanently disabled of our ordinances of the city related to sewer rates and declaring an emergency. I think we got the explanation from Frank already, so can, uh, we have a motion for third reading? Sandy, Wally. Kirk, call oral.
Luhori.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutis.
Yes.
Alright, number C. Ninety-six thirty-eight dash eighteen, an ordinance replacing ordinance number seventy-seven eighty dash zero-five relating to water rates and declaring an emergency. Alright, we had the explanation of that already too, so can we have a motion? Vic and Wally. Kirk, call oral.
Luhori.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutis.
Yes.
Alright, it comes to the portion of reports. Mike, do you have anything to report?
Yes, thanks, Sandy. Just a few items, um, just finally reminder that the annual Fall Fest will be held this Saturday down at the Square Children's Event. Uh, that event is from ten to one. A lot of different vendors, local businesses, metro parks. Highly recommended. I do want to mention that our company that we had come out to sound our water system, we bring them out every year, they look for the minor breaks that we may not be able to pick up. Uh, they did identify thirteen leaks throughout the city. The majority of them were small leaks that we wouldn't have located. Uh, there were two that were getting ready to be significant. Um, our crews were out, we worked to repair those, and we're moving through that, um, to repair the additional eleven that have been out there. So, it's obviously something that we started doing a few years back, um, and it's proved beneficial to bring that company in. Obviously, those will only get worse and could lead to much larger breaks, so hopefully that'll also improve on some of our water numbers, Frank, as we, um, you put that information together. On top of that, you know, we've been working with, um, our fire department and water department very closely. We identified, um, a handful of hydrants that either need to get replaced, or they need to be repaired throughout town. Um, we've, we're working off of a priority, top priority, and move down. I can assure you, if you do have a hydrant, you know, if on your streets or in an area that may not be working, or if it's tagged, um, obviously our fire department can get to your home or wherever would be needed from another hydrant, um, in the area, but we will get to that. Once we take care of these leaks, we'll continue to move forward and make those repairs, and in some instances, replace those hydrants. Um, the, I wanna say, I don't have the exact number, but I can provide that to council. On top of that, while we're talking about water, we sent out a sample that we're required, we're required, we take, um, up to thirty samples from various homes throughout the city, and we send that in for lead testing. It's tested in certain levels, zero to fifteen is kind of how they, um, identify it. The levels that, the average that we submitted, uh, came in at four, which is extremely low, um, for an inner range suburb like ours, it's very, very good. Um, it's actually, the, the, the numbers came in lower than what they were the last time we tested it, which was in twenty fifteen. So, um, and that sample came from, we picked thirty homes throughout the entire city to try to get an accurate assessment of those samples. So, um, the report came in very, very good. We're working to submit a fifty-fifty grant, the county offers a fifty-fifty grant, uh, for infrastructure, we're gonna try to take advantage of that. Our application is centered around, uh, resurfacing of Forbes Road, so we should have that wrapped up in the next couple of weeks, and we'll get that submitted. In regards to the road program, uh, the majority of, I should say, all of the streets have been resurfaced, we're now moving on to powers. Some of those streets caused, we had to put a little bit more, um, money into some of the repairs that we needed to. Um, on top of that, we did do all of the crack sealing on Columbus and Rockside Road. That crack sealing was, we had twenty-five thousand dollars to work with, uh, because that was from a grant that we got from the county. So we didn't get the entire of those two streets, they're not entirely completed, we went as far as we could go utilizing those dollars. So we'll come back and, and work with them to try to do the remaining amount. Uh, we needed to get that done before we had the, the striping company come in, which they did come in at the end of last week and did the long lines, and we've been working, um, in the evenings last week to do, for instance, downtown Bedford's, the parking, and we still have some of the crossbars and crosswalks to do. But, you know, we really wanted to make sure that striping took place after the crack sealing, uh, because, to be quite honest, we could've did the striping, you know, a month ago, month and a half ago, but if they would've went over and crack sealed, it would've been a lot right, to be honest with you. So, um, that was finished, and I, I think it came out, uh, it came out well. Um, the one thing is though, we, with some of the costs that had to go into some of the, some of the other roads, I know Lee, Lee Road was, uh, one that, uh, cost estimates were a little low, we had to do some additional repairs. It is gonna negatively, negatively affect powers. Um, we are doing powers, uh, we're meeting this week, but we anticipate, especially from Broadway to the underpass, that concrete section, we anticipate it's gonna need a significant amount of work. It's one of the things that we're worried about. If that is in fact true, the amount of money that we put forward for the road program, obviously, we would go over. So one of the things we're looking at is, well, what is gonna be that difference? Do we have money in eighteen's budget somewhere to cover that? Or the alternative will be, we go ahead and pick which section we wanna do. Either do that concrete portion from Broadway to the underpass this year, and do the rest next year, or vice versa. Maybe we come in and do the asphalt from the underpass all the way to the cul-de-sac, and then come back and do the concrete portion next year. Those are, those are three options. Either we look at what those numbers are, and we won't know that probably until this week, um, and then we can make a more accurate decision, but we'll share that with council and, and obviously make the best decision possible. But, we are wrapping up with that. I think the best approach, and I, I don't wanna say this is what we're doing, um, there is some funds that we can go into for, for what we had anticipated to do with the sidewalks, that what we were going to do in October. If we do a portion of powers, we'll still have those funds to go around and, and start the walk program. Um, so, you know, we have that limited amount of money we're, we're working with, and we're gonna try to make the best decision possible. If a section of powers isn't done this year, it will be first on the list going into next year's road program, so it will get done, it's just a matter of, of when. But we'll have that answer later this weekend. And that is, uh, end of report.
Thanks, Mike. John, I don't have much of a report, but I would like you to let you know that the court will be closed on Columbus Day, so if anybody has any business over there, wait till Tuesday. But the city is open.
Well, we are open.
Thank you, end of report. Frankie?
Mike, I have a fourth option, I'll talk to you later, it just came to me how we can do that. Um, might help a lot. The, uh, but we're working on the budget for two thousand and nineteen now, so as we work on two thousand and eighteen, we're in a couple of years at the same time here. Tax Department's gonna be working and has already sent out a lot of non-filing letters, so if you do get that to help us clean up our records, we greatly appreciate it. Sometimes we don't know when people move, uh, if anybody gets those letters, uh, make sure they contact the tax department. Also, we'll be doing a tax comparison of state records, uh, what we do is we do from time to time, usually on a yearly basis, we'll compare the income filed with the states and who's filing through our records, and make sure they file with us, so we can do a full comparison of who owes us a return. And that's the end of my report, we're very busy right now.
Alright, now we come to council reports, just wanna make a quick statement, no, I am not the mayor. The mayor got called away, uh, in a family emergency here at the last second, and of course, our vice mayor has a few issues too, so she couldn't make it tonight, so being, I guess, the senior member on council, I get elected for this for one night. Vic?
Uh, I got some announcement here, we got the Light of Heartsville Annual Fall Fest, it'll be Sunday, October fourteenth, uh, from twelve to five, it's at two-eight-three Union Street, uh, Horned Union in, uh, Norfield. Um, servings are three convenient times twelve, one-thirty, and three-thirty, and they'd like to have reservations by October third, which is Wednesday, and, uh, the prices, I think, are thirty dollars for, seniors are twenty, and anybody under is thirty dollars, I'm pretty sure that's what the dinners are. And they have a raffle, and the, uh, all kinds of, uh, gifts and prizes and stuff, and, uh, I know Marilyn used to always, uh, report this and praise this as a good cause, and, uh, and I know they get a lot of people that, uh, go to this. So, I left some flyers, or should say, Laurie did somewhere around here, if you want one on the podium, take with you, so you have the phone number to call and, uh, reserve your tickets. Thank you, end of report.
I know Marilyn Zalata and Chrissy Posick are both still collecting, uh, door prizes that would be given away at the raffle time too, so if, if you have something you'd like to donate to the Light of Hearts, drop it off at the main desk, and, uh, they'll be glad to take it and add it to the list. It's Heather.
Hello, everyone, thank you for coming. Alright, pretty short for me tonight, uh, we had our BDA stakeholder meeting, uh, BDA being Bedford Downtown Alliance Stakeholder Meeting this past week. We are finalizing plans for a chocolate walk fundraiser, if you're not familiar with this, you purchase a ticket, and then you get to walk from business to business and get a piece of chocolate at each place. It's a lot of fun, uh, several communities do it, actually Lakewood is having theirs in two weeks, their tickets went on sale today, it sold out in less than a day. So, uh, we are hoping to have that kind of success, uh, with our chocolate walk as well. Our chocolate walk, on the other hand, will be in February, February sixteenth, and will be a cheap Valentine's Day date, uh, which will be, uh, we're looking to sell tickets for ten dollars apiece. So if, uh, you're looking to make plans for Valentine's Day and you want a cheap date, keep us in mind. So, uh, we will also be launching First Friday events, for those, we'll be starting in March, with our first one being the March for Arts, where we're going to be showing off some of the artwork from our students at our Bedford City Schools. Uh, and for the First Friday events, we will be looking for entertainment people, uh, we have no money to pay anybody, but, if you have somebody that, that you know, who, uh, is just looking for a space, maybe they're trying to get their name out there, or they just wanna practice space, uh, we're, we're open. As long as you're family friendly, we have very low standards on quality. If you could play a musical instrument and you wanted to do so in public, we'd love to hear from you. Uh, last but not least, I, we will be doing the bean sale, uh, at the Fall Fest, the city's Fall Fest, on October sixth. Uh, we have a lovely bean soup that we sell for the garden club as one of our fundraisers, so it makes a wonderful meal, and we're also including crock pot instructions this time. So you can just put it on in the morning and come home to a lovely meal in the evening. Uh, the bean soup will go for four-fifty a bag, if you're interested, please let me know, and I'll get you, uh, some bean soup, and that's all for me, thank you.
Alright, Wally.
Thank you. Well, you hear a blood curdling scream from me, it's because I accidentally touched my eye, I made that hot sauce all yesterday, couldn't find any good hooks, this is a pretty dangerous finger right here. The, uh, this time of the year, uh, it's kinda special, you know, the, the kids go back to school, and the Browns are playing, we have all our fall colors and decorations and whatnot, and being a gardener, this is also my favorite time of year to garden, uh, because the pressure's off trying to have things grow well, and I think about next year and prepare a garden. And I just, I'm just bringing this up because, um, I just wanna remind people that, um, we have a community garden, and, uh, that allows residents to have a spot in it, and, uh, you, you know, I just wanna put it out there because it's probably one of the greatest assets in our city, and also probably one of the, um, least well-known. So I just wanna make a, uh, point of, uh, reminding people, if you wanna part, have a garden, and it's fenced in, you get full sun, uh, there's, there's water in there, it's really, it's really a great thing. So you might wanna think about that, especially now, because when I have a good garden, I have to start in the fall and prep it, uh, instead of waiting until next summer. On Thursday, September twentieth, there was a talk about deer with two members of the U.S. Department of Agriculture, as promised, and I, I appreciate that, uh, Mr. Matus arranged the meeting. They showed some examples of what other communities are doing, and what we could do individually in terms of fencing and use of various repellents. They gave no indication the deer are starving as a purpose for killing them. They attributed the deer population in part by the fact they have not had predators in the past, with the abundance of the population occurring at the edge habitats, that is, where the forest meets the clearing and open spaces such that our yards are in Bedford. There is no answer to how many deer are too many, it is merely a perception of the residents and city leaders based on a socially acceptable, um, amount of property damage and our tra, and/or traffic accidents. A lot of people think there are just too many, but it would be interesting to know, if you see, for example, five in a group, what would be the acceptable number? Four, or three? They were not willing to say, "That's up to us," and it's a difficult thing. They did say, "If you want no deer at all, a high fence would have to be erected around the entire city." When the deer manage, when our deer management program was first proposed, I did a lot of research into the pros and cons, trying to be objective apart from my own personal beliefs and religious upbringing. I studied the city of Solon's ongoing efforts, I concluded then, these killing programs are just not effective, in that they become perpetual with no end, and I voted accordingly, yet I helped write the ordinance. Today, I still don't perceive the need to kill the deer. This council is not in agreement. In Solon, the people voted to continue their deer program, if I recall correctly, by a sixty-two percent to thirty-eight percent margin. If Bedford is similar to Solon, close to forty percent of the people here would be against it, so I know I'm not alone. I wonder what our kids are thinking. Frankly, I don't really know what the right thing is. The deer program seems more of a political solution than anything. It takes only one deer to eat your roses, and it only takes one deer to step in front of your car. There are indeed legitimate and ethical reasons to call wildlife. These are to protect other species, to protect people's way of making a living, to stop them from eating food sources, some animals pose a danger to humans, the population of certain animals with no predators will keep increasing. I don't think any of those actually apply. Now that we have an influx of coyotes, which the wildlife experts conceded were indeed predators of the deer. Being a gardener, and having paid for car repairs myself, I know the deer are inconvenient. They are inconvenient when they nibble on our flowers, and they're inconvenient when we have to slow down our cars when they cross the street. I get it, still oftentimes we forget, we live in one of the largest hardwood forests, in the largest freshwater ecosystem on the planet, and animals are gonna be walking around as long as the city prohibits fencing off our yards entirely, fencing being the best deterrent according to the USDA reps. While they didn't offer any specific recommendations, they repeated it was all up to us and our thinking. I think maybe we should change, be changing our minds a little about our natural landscape, like turning the facets of a gem, and start seeing, seeing the abundance of greenery and wildlife as an asset and a blessing, and even a selling point. People say there have never been so many deer here before, but there have never been coyotes either, or the turkeys, or the bald eagles, like there are today. Nature is prevailing here, why fight it? One thing I know for sure, the deer are here for good, so are the coyotes. My prediction is, the same people who have been asking over and over, "What are you gonna do about the deer?" will soon be asking, "What are you gonna do about the coyotes?" So goes. Here, there will be people who will now expect the cops to shoot the coyotes too, and who knows, maybe they already are. The city manager and Bedford cops are doing the best they know how, in the most reasonable and cost-effective and safe way they know. Both the two members of the USDA and the Division of Wildlife have acknowledged that. So, don't get me wrong, I acknowledge that also, and I appreciate their efforts and the way they're conducting the program, but I still hold to the belief that nature has something sublime to teach us, to, to lead us to a more natural and compassionate, less superficial and artificial life. I believe in na, I believe in nature, there is a wisdom that is beyond our understanding of these matters, so I guess we'll see what happens. Thank you, end of report.
Alright, Sandy.
I just wanted to, um, give a, um, thought prayer, is with, uh, the mayor, Mayor Coche's, uh, family, his youngest brother's wife, um, had to be life-hodded, um, this weekend, and she had, uh, has taken a turn for the worse this afternoon, and the family was called in. Um, our mayor got the call around six, six-thirty, seven o'clock, and so he was looking to go be with his mother to let her know, um, it's not looking good. She is only around fifty-six years old, so it's very sad. Um, and when she was life-hodded, it took, um, Stan's brother about two hours to get to the hospital, so, uh, thoughts are definitely with his family, his brother, um, it's horrible when family's out of town, you can't be there with them, so, um, um, thoughts and prayers are with them. It's always difficult when fa, family goes far away. Um, this past week, or about a week ago, I did make a, a, a comment, and, um, spoke to the senior, um, meeting about an incident that happened, um, an extra neighbor to mine, Elder Luwavy, who came home, um, went in like she always does, walked in, put her purse on her, um, kitchen table, went into her reading room, she heard a noise, thought it was a cat, and this, uh, noise man walked into her home. TV zones, she's right there, walked in right within, as close as man, picked her purse up and walked out, and thank God, a resident was walking her dog, and she called. And, um, the police, the Bedford police are absolutely phenomenal, um, I had just gotten home and saw the police, I saw the guy, the guy, um, had passed through our yard. Had passed through our yard a couple of days before and we've had a problem with that in the last couple of years coming from valley-filled apartments. People just walk right through our yards to cut over, own two grand. And so I'm so glad that she was not, that Ms. Thomas did not see the guy. She thought it was a cat and I'm so glad she didn't because she's feisty. So she would definitely, she would have confronted him. So that just shows you just how things are. And it's not, it's not that Bedford's unsafe, it's everywhere. It just nowadays, you have to lock your door. So I was telling all the seniors, you know, even if you just walked in, turn around and lock that door. You can't take it for granted. Times have changed, safety first. And again, if you see something, if you see somebody in your neighborhood and it does not look right, call that non-emergency number. And if it looks serious, then you call 911. Look out for your neighbors. We've got a lot of seniors, we've got a lot of kids and stuff. Saw a situation last week that didn't look real good with a kid. There was an adult and I did not know that adult was talking to him. Sure enough, that adult did not belong in our neighborhood. So see something, say something. Very, very important to do that. Fall Festival this weekend. This will be my, probably my eighth year to face paint. Little comments that was on the Neighborhood Watch about why wasn't Fall Festival longer, wasn't long enough, this and that. Someone was fussing about they didn't get their kids face painted last year. I had closed my, Berkeley closed my booth down and chained on me and, ah, that Kim's one speaks a bad, you know, person because she closed him in her face. Well, for one thing, this is volunteer people. It costs about $300 to rent a professional face painter, which I am. I use professional face paint. I do this out of my own pocket. I do this because this is for our kids and our city. Sitting three or four hours sometimes in the freezing cold, just depends on how the weather is. I've had to face paint by block fires for so, um, three hours, four hours, that's a long time. Sitting there, Joyce, she's done it. She's pissed in sometimes and trying to help me out at a couple of Fall Fests because I'll look up and as far as I can see, and a lot of times I've stayed while everybody else is picking up tables, I'm still trying to get the kids that were standing in line. So be patient and do realize that everybody that's doing this to make this event, at three or four hours is a lot of time to get volunteers to do something out of the day because everybody that's doing this to make this a great event is busy. You know, have other jobs and stuff. So be kind to your people that are, they're taking their time to do something for you for free. End of report.
All right, I'm last today. So I've got a couple of things here on my list of usuals. When we do Powers Road, that section basically from the bridge to Broadway has heavy truck traffic with turning movements. I would hope that they would use the truck thickness, or not thickness, but the truck mix for that because otherwise, we're just going to create problems when you overlay onto the top of concrete because trucks will push it, which is quite evident when you go to the Solon Road, Northfield Road intersection where the trucks come to a stop. Most of those are caused by garbage trucks going from waste management where they've rumpled it up. You'll notice in a lot of cities now that are at, especially at intersections, the curb lane will get a concrete pad for both buses and trucks that come to a stop at a stoplight so that those asphalt don't get pushed up. But I would hope that they do, do something of that nature when they do overlay it or it may actually be worthwhile for that small section to fix the concrete and leave it as concrete. The water line sounding, it's good to see that we didn't have that many repairs that were, or leaks, I should say. When you did the testing, you should have come and done it at my house because the lead line that used to come to my house had to be replaced when it started leaking. So now I'm rid of the lead too, so, but. And if some of these older houses had their lead lines pulled out, there'll be less and less of that lead showing up in the water. It's amazing how many of the houses prior to 1960 actually had lead lines put in from the water line to the house. Now, it may not look like that when it got to the meter, but a lot of them underground are. So gradually, as unfortunately, it costs thousands to replace. Those get replaced, I think our water qualities will definitely go up a little bit. Two quick notes. Have we figured out why that section of Northfield Road is dipped in front of the house that was torn down, that area? Because it has gone down, it's quite a bump now. I don't know if we can level that off or something.
We're going to try to with basketball.
I'm just hoping there isn't a big void and suddenly we lose a car down there. But I don't know, do we have the capability of drilling a hole in there and see what's down there? Yeah, okay. It was just a thought, because I know some areas will drill a hole in it and then look down there and see if it is. I have a feeling it relates to that 42-inch water line that was put in a number of years ago. And Cleveland probably used sand as a backfill and that tends to wash out after a while, unfortunately. And then you get left with a big hole. The other thing is the chuck holes that were put in by Dominion's, which happens, they used our asphalt contractor. They did not adjust the castings around the turn over by Barker Landscaping as you come off of Broadway in. Some of those castings are down this much. The water castings are only little holes, but there's at least one manhole there that's at least an inch and a half down. They should have either adjusted it or put a ring in it. Now, I'm assuming they raised the asphalt in that area to be able to get the drainage back to the catch bases because we've always had a drainage problem in that intersection. But if you could look into it, they did seal the area the other day too. That intersection is 100% better now that it was ground and resurfaced. But if you're coming north on Broadway and you make that right-hand turn onto Taylor Road there, you go kafu-kum because it's a pretty good bounce over in that area. So if you could look into that, it would be appreciated. And I do want to thank the crews that did the striping. It's so nice to be able to drive down the streets now and actually see where the lanes are. And if you notice, the yellow that they use this year is the proper pavement yellow. I know I brought that up before. It's not the lemon yellow that they used last year, but it is nice to see that. However, I did find one street they missed and that happened to be Ennis Hill. They didn't do the hill. They did lane around and down lane for the hospital, but they didn't come up that stretch of Ennis Hill that's a double yellow. But it's not in that bad a shape, so if it has to wait, it waits. But there's no passing going up and down that hill either, which brings in another problem that people are parking on that hill again. And you come up over that hill and there's a parked car there, somebody's going to get slammed someday. But in any case, the striping has turned out really nice. So I just wish we'd do it in April when we could use it all summer instead of in the winter. But that's for discussion at a later time. All right, moving on. New business.
Ordinance number 9646-18. And ordinance, amended ordinance number 8934-12, Section 1105.03 entitled Rental Rates for the Ellenwood Recreation Center and declaring emergency.
All right, it's the intention of council to put this on first reading, so can I have a motion for Heather, Sandy? Clerk, call the roll.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janus?
Yes.
Orders.
Ordinance number 9647-18, allowing employee participants to make insurance plan premium contributions on a pre-tax basis for the calendar year 2019 through Wage Works and declaring an emergency.
Okay, this is also the intention of council to put this on first reading, so can we have a motion? And Sandy. I forgot you, Governor. Clerk, call the roll.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janus?
Yes.
All right, we come to the portion for hearing of citizens. Any citizens that would like to speak, please come up to their microphone, give your name and your address and speak your piece.
Hello, Sarah Ganati, speaking on behalf of the Southeast Branch Library. Just giving you a heads up on some of our October programs this month. Today, we started what we call Kids Cafe. What it is, it's very similar to our summer lunch program through the Greater Cleveland Food Bank, except now we are considered, due to our statistics with the schools, a number of students on free and reduced lunch, that we will now be serving dinner to this area. Just due to our programming though and our facilities, we are serving an early dinner at 3 o'clock till 3:45. Which, you know, if you do know of some families that are looking, we are serving. So we're trying to get a gauge on how many meals to have. So if you do know families that do qualify, please let them know that the Southeast Branch is now a serving site Monday through Friday. Also, what we have coming up, you know, in addition to our reoccurring programs as always, is we are starting back up with our school year Engage With Me series, which is a parent-child program in which families come together, we provide dinner and they usually go for some kind of topic. So it's a monthly program that's upcoming Thursday, October 11th. And this topic for this month is self-portrait. So they'll be doing some self-reflection and things like that. So they do things with the parents, do things with the students. We are also having on Saturday, October 27th, a Halloween Spookacular Saturday. This will be in the afternoon. It does not conflict with your city event. But this is come dressed in your costume and they'll have a spooky good time with crafts, activities and snacks. Also, that week, we are celebrating Chemistry Week Fun and we have a special STEM project on Tuesday, October 23rd. We've also started our homework center, so if you have K-8 students, send them our way. For our adult programming upcoming this Saturday, we have a free credit repair program at 10 a.m. We also have a, next Wednesday, a vampire talk, which sounds really cool. So we'll have a guy come in who's going to talk about vampire centric books and kind of get into that whole cop curricula thing. Seems like a lot of fun. And we're also starting a two-week series program for stop-motion animation for adults. And then finally, I wanted to highlight this Thursday at 7 o'clock, we do have another parent lecture. This one is called Raising Resilient, Responsible and Independent Children. So this is for caregivers and parents of all age children. You might as well get them while they're young to teach them how to handle disappointment, empower them to be independent, how to manage feelings, relate to others and obviously be responsible for themselves and their homework and their chores. So that's what's going on at the library. Thank you.
Got one quick question. Do you know what the results of the poll was for the voting in the library?
What do you mean?
They were, they were in the running for top library or I think it was in the country.
Are you, are you, oh. So there's two things. So they were a semifinalist like of the top libraries in the country. I don't think we won, but I know we did very well. But just released today is that we won a $50,000 grant from Google. We already received one from Google, but we got an additional $50,000 that will be used towards hotspots. And one of the things that, I guess I can put this out there, it's not totally out there yet, but Southeast Branch qualifies for 75 hotspots. So these are, think of them as like, like a device in which you can broadcast a wireless signal and we will have 75 of those that are used for this community. And they can check it out like a book for three weeks and they get fined. Luckily, it's only like a book, 10 cents a day. However, if you're late, we turn it off. So there's 75 of those that will be available to the community members. We only provided the Wi-Fi. They obviously have to have their own device. But this grant that we just got through Google will help support that and get more of those in other areas. We're one of four communities that will be doing the hotspots. Warrensville Heights, Garfield Heights, Maple Heights and us. And so with the additional $50,000, we'll, I'm not sure if we'll get more or they'll open it up to other communities, but definitely get into the hands of some of our GED students since most of that work is online.
Thank you. People don't realize what an asset that library is having in our own backyard. Anyone else? Is there a slim picket sign? Okay. And we move for adjournments. Sandy? Big?
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janus?
Yes.